The prior apartment, the council meeting reported if you have a cellphone, that that you put it on the side of you for all this time. This time we'll be letting a prayer by Madam Clerk, following the prayer, to place her allegiance. Madam Clerk?
O God of might, wisdom and justice, through whom authority is rightly administered, laws enacted in judgment decreed, assist us, we beseech thee, that this city council may be conducted in righteousness and be imminently useful to like people over whom we reside. Amen.
Amen.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands, a nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Madam Clerk?
Councilors Williams here, Morgan, West-
Present.
Jacobs-
Present.
Mayor Kirkland-
Present.
Move for the group of minutes.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Resolution. Um, Counselor Williams-
Yes.
Morgan, West, Jacobs, Mayor Kirkland.
Yes. This time we will have the microphone for public comments. If you have public comments that you would use the microphone, state your name, your address, and your comments.
Good morning, everyone.
Good morning.
My name is Patricia Miranda, and I live at 22 East 23rd Street in Chester. I just have two, um, things I want to bring before the City Council. First, I want to find out, are we having a paper shredding done as involved, where the constituents can be able to bring our papers that we have in our home and bring them into the city to be able to shred them, and I was wondering if we were doing that this year?
Yeah.
Is that something that-
We've already done it.
So you're only doing it one time a year?
Yeah, that's the most for us.
Okay.
Wish we could do more, but we can't now.
Thank you. And my other question is, I live at, um, 22 East 23rd Street, and at the residence of 38 and 40, there must be a rehab program inside those homes, because there seems like there's a lot of strange people that are in our neighborhood. I've been living in my home for 34 years, so I kind of know everybody living in my block. And I'm just seeing a lot of strange people living in residence, and they're not like in residence where you see a wife, children, see a lot of men. My question is that next door to, I live at the in-house, and the next door to me is a church, and they have a stairway where you can go down into the stairwell and no one will see you, and I've seen, um, women, and I have seen men down in that stairway, and it kind of concerns me, because I live next door to that, plus there are children that live in our block, and I just don't know what's going on down there. I did question, uh, the young lady was down there, and I asked her, was she okay? I was basically asking if she was okay, and she told me that she was, but it concerns me that it's, first, it's next to my house, but it's people that I don't know, people that I'm not used to seeing in my neighborhood. And my, also, is my concern is at those particular residents, and at 40, I think it's even 40, 42, they're rehabbing that, and I'm concerned, is this going to be rehab for residents to live there, or they're going to put another, uh, center with men that's going to be living in homes? And it concerns me, because in the next block, people sell drugs in the next block, and if it's a, uh, a place where people are coming to get clean while they're putting it in a block where all they have to do is go in the next block and buy their drugs. And, and, and plus, also, across the street from me, that's where they do, uh, they come and ride their bikes and park their cars, and people come and get their drugs on that particular corner, straight across the street from me. So if they're doing that there, they're doing it in a block ahead of me, and they have these homes that supposedly for rehab, for folks to get clean, how are they going to be clean when you have all this stuff going on? And then why has happened? How hasn't the constituents that live in that block been told that they're bringing these type of facilities in our block?
Ms. Patricia, what we will do, if we can get those addresses from you again?
38 and 40, East 23rd Street, and at 42, they're working at 42 East 23rd Street, and, um, I just don't, I mean, they're fixing up for folks to live there, that's fine, I don't have a problem with that, but if they're going to be fixing it up to have, to put supposedly places for people coming in clean, then I think as homeowners, we should know about that. We should have been told that these folks are coming into our block, so we can either object to it, we can either say it's okay, or whatever. It's just not fair for us, you know, I've been living in my house for 34 years, there's a couple other people that have been living there longer than I have, but I just think as respect for, um, our neighbors and for our particular block, that we should have been, um, you know, at least brought to, to our attention, that this is what was going to be happening. And I'm worried about the kids, because we got these strange men, uh, walking down the street that nobody knows anything about, and they don't live in, they, they probably live in a block, but there's, these kids are outside playing, and women are walking to the stores and whatnot, and it, and I've been seeing a lot of strange women, which means that gives me some idea of what's going on, but, you know, I just wish that, you know, someone investigated, and then let, let us know what we need to do as, um, as a community. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Patricia. We will do that, and, and talk to, uh, certain department heads, and see if we can find out that information for you as well as ourselves. Thank you.
Thank you.
I just want to reiterate, if you're not, um, have comments on agenda items, um, at the end of the meeting, after you do all the resolutions, public comment, after that. Thank you.
See you in a minute. First at the podium, Madam Clerk?
Resolution. Whereas, the following intervention has been requested of handicap parking zone. Lilian Harris, 300 West 22nd Street, Chester PA 19013. Whereas, after a thorough investigation by the Department of Streets and Public Improvement, it has been determined that the aforementioned individual has met all of the required criteria and have a need for said handicap parking zone. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that it does hereby authorize the proper city officials to install a handicap parking zone in the 300 block of West 22nd Street in the City of Chester.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
Morgan, West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that it does hereby authorize the Department of Accounts and Finance to refund the sum of $282 to the Diagamo Construction Inc., 38 Huntington Farm Drive, Glen Mills PA 19342, which represents reimbursement for permits paid in error on the property located at 741 Hayes Street.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
Morgan, West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that it does hereby ratify the appointment of Jovan Forden to the position of Laborer, Department of Streets and Public Improvement, effective October 19th, 2019, with all benefits and the salary as provided in the annual appropriation ordinance. Said employee has successfully completed the 60-day probationary period.
So moved.
I'm sorry. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, at the City Council session of August 14th, 2019, the Council adopted a resolution regarding specificity, specificity and the authorized purposes of the Chester Water Authority, a copy of which is attached here too, as Exhibit A, the specificity resolution, and whereas, such resolution includes as authorized projects, amongst other projects, the following. Number one, all projects involving the provision of waterworks, water supply works, water distribution systems, or wastewater management services to existing geographic territories served as of the date hereof, and/or, number two, all capital improvements which are already under construction. And whereas, at a hearing on October 16th, in the litigation entitled Chester Water Authority versus Aqua Pennsylvania Inc. and City of Chester, in the Delaware County Court of Common Pleas, the October 16th hearing, the Chester Water Authority argued incorrectly that the specificity resolution that all of its capital projects require pre-approval by City Council. And whereas, the Chester Water Authority's Director of Engineering, the CWA engineer, testified at the October 16th hearing that the capital current project budget of the authority is as attached as Exhibit B, the CWA capital budget, which contains 31 capital projects, either in progress or which the Chester Water Authority hopes to begin work on prior to, to the end of 2021. And whereas, the CWA engineer testified at the October 16th hearing that, except for the East Nottingham Reinforcement and the Newark Tank, the projects on the CWA capital budget all involve involving the provision of waterworks, water supply works, water distribution systems, or wastewater management services to existing geographic territories served as of August 14th, 2019. And whereas, the CWA engineer testified at the October 16th hearing that the East Nottingham Reinforcement project is already under construction, but construction has not begun on the Newark Tank project. And whereas, the City of Chester does not have any reason to not believe the testimony of the CWA engineer at the October 16th hearing as to the foregoing elements. And whereas, the Chester Water Authority has not presented to the City of Chester any information regarding the Newark Tank project, Newark has been requested approval of the City of Chester for such project. And whereas, such project is not even projected to begin design work until 2020. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve that based upon the sworn testimony of the CWA engineer at the October 16th hearing, the specificity resolution as adopted on August 14th, 2019, already authorizes all of the projects of the CWA capital budget as attached here too, except for the Newark Tank project, and be it further resolved. And in the interest of avoiding any confusion, the City of Chester expressly authorizes the Chester Water Authority to undertake all of the capital projects identified on the CWA capital budget, except for the Newark Tank project, the 20th project listed on Exhibit B.
So moved.
I'm sorry. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve that in accordance with recommendations of the City of Chester Planning Commission dated May 8th, 2019, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on May 16th, 2019, it does hereby grant final approval for Agronomics Pharmaceuticals for reverse subdivision and land development to incorporate 12 lots into one lot, and develop a 2,455 square foot medical marijuana dispensary located at 7th and North Streets, Chester PA 19013, as shown on a plan prepared by Catania Engineering located at 520 West McDavid Boulevard, Millmount Park PA 190333311, dated April 24th, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that in accordance with recommendations of the Chester City Planning Commission dated May 8th, 2019, and approved by the Delaware County Planning Commission on May 16th, 2019, it does hereby grant final approval for Agronomics Pharmaceuticals land development of a 70,000 square foot medical marijuana processing growing facility and parking lot located at 8th and Henson Street, Chester PA 19013, as shown on a plan prepared by Catania Engineering located at 520 West McDavid Boulevard, Millmount Park PA 190333311, dated April 22nd, 2019.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve, whereas on March 13th, 2019, Chester City Council approved the final land development for Mark Ryan to subdivide one parcel into four separate parcels and construct two semi-detached dwellings located at 701 East 19th Street, Chester PA 19013. And whereas, said plans were not recorded within 90 days of municipal approval. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that in accordance with recommendations of the Chester City Planning Commission dated February 13th, 2019, and reviewed by the Delaware County Planning Commission on January 17th, 2019, it does hereby grant final land development approval for Mark Ryan to subdivide one parcel into four separate parcels and construct two semi-detached dwellings located at 701 East 19th Street, Chester PA 19013, and is shown on a plan prepared by Canoni Associates Inc., located at 1 South Church Street, second floor, West Chester PA 19382, dated December 20th, 2018.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. Whereas, Chester's Police Department has three vehicles that have been discontinued from use, and it has been determined that they have a salvage value of less than $2,000. And whereas, the Police Department has arranged for the vehicles to be salvaged, and for the city to receive the sum stated below for each vehicle. Now therefore, the Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that it does hereby approve the transfer of the title for the 1999 Ford Expedition VIN number 1FMPU181LAXLB73311 to Miller's Savage, for the salvage value of $300, to be paid to the City of Chester upon receipt of the title.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions?
Oh, you didn't finish? I'm sorry. I'm sorry.
Then it does hereby approve the transfer of the title for the 2001 Ford Windstar, VIN number 2FMZA50491BC24299, to Miller's Savage, for the salvage value of $250, to be paid to the City of Chester upon receipt of the title. Further resolve, that it does hereby approve the transfer of the title for the 2017 Ford Interceptor, VIN number 1FM5K8AT7HG62678, to Florio's Auto Body, for the salvage value of $300, to be paid to the City of Chester upon receipt of the title.
So moved.
Second. Any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that it does hereby authorize the proper city official to enter to the attachment, municipal attachment agreement between the City of Chester and Verizon Pennsylvania LLC, to allow the use of Verizon Polo's conduits. Further said agreement is contingent upon final review and approval of the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that it does hereby authorize entry into the memorandum of understanding, MOU, between the City of Chester Police Department and the Chester Charter Scholars Academy, formerly the Chester Charter School for the Arts, as a requirement of the Pennsylvania Safe Schools Act 24PS13-1301-X, to establish procedures to be followed when certain incidents may occur on school property, at any school, sponsored activity, or on a conveyance providing transportation to or from a school, or school-sponsored activity, including but not limited to a bu, a school bus, as described in the MOU. Further, that it does hereby ratify the execution of the MOU by the Chester Police Commissioner for and on behalf of the City of Chester, and final approval of the MOU is contingent upon the approval by the city solicitor.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. Be resolved by authority of the Chester City Council of the Chester City, Delaware County, and it is hereby resolved by authority of the same, that the city engineer of said municipality is authorized and directed to submit the attached application for traffic signal approval to the Pennsylvania Department of Transportation, and to sign this application on behalf of the municipality.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Resolution. The Council of the City of Chester does resolve, that it does approve an order payment of a series, a series of bills and refunds as prepared by the Department of Accounts and Finance, and is shown on expenditure approval as stated October 11th, 2019, attached here too, and made apart error, subject to approval from the Department of Account and Finance.
So moved.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Bill number eight on its first reading for October 23rd, 2019, and ordinance, and ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 925 entitled, refuse collection section, tw, 925.07, entitled, refuse preparation for deposit or collection of the codified ordinance of the City of Chester, to add a new subsection, 925.07E, requiring that any mattresses and board box springs placed currently for collection by the city, or its sanitation hall or be bagged for purposes of preventing the spread of bed bugs.
I move that bill number eight be passed on its first reading.
I'm sorry. Any questions?
I don't have a question there, but I have a statement. I'm asked for this to bend up to the ordinance, because they, we've been collecting the mattresses and box springs, and there's an infestation of bed bugs and other, you know, items coming from people's homes, so we need to protect the men who are collecting these items. We certainly do not want them to take anything home to their families, so, you know, just if there's a question, I want you to know why it's being done. We, and you can get these bags from the dollar store or Walmart, they're not expensive, and you don't put out mattresses and box springs that often, but when you do, we're requiring that you put in a, um, a mattress, cup, container, cover. Thank you.
Thank you, yes. Any further questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
Morgan-
I'm sorry.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Bill number nine on its first reading, October 23rd, 2019, and ordinance, and ordinance of the City of Chester, Delaware County, Pennsylvania, amending Article 107, entitled Assessments of the Codified Ordinances of the City of Chester, Pennsylvania, 1978, to eliminate perennial assessments and to provide for annual assessments and an annual appeal of assessments, and to repeal all ordinances or parcel ordinances inconsistent therewith.
I move that we pass bill number nine on its first reading.
Second. Are there any questions? Madam Clerk?
Counselors Williams-
Yes.
West-
Yes.
Jacobs-
Yes.
Mayor Kirkland-
Yes.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time we'll have a report by Secret Attorney. Welcome.
I'd like to say good morning to Mayor, Councilman, all of us that are here. I'd like to read the 2020 MNO, which is Minimum Inadequate Obligation to 2020, a police pension plan, 8,220,254, a fire pension plan, 953,107, non-munipawn pension plan, 1,554,097. Thank you.
Thank you, Madam Clerk. This time we will have the microphone for public comments. You have public comments on, uh, agenda items or other items. Please state your name, your address, and your comments.
My name is Brian Henderson, 309 East 12th Street, Chester, Pennsylvania. Good morning.
Good morning.
All right, um, I'm, I'm here for the youth of our fine city. We all know that our city is in dire need. Our children, we have an epidemic, and so, that our total of the youth is up from five years ago, which was 30, which was 17, sitting there, up 30. I have a message for some of them, and this is Lee Spencer. It says, Chester wanted big, Chester wanted to build the schools, same stores and hotels, but don't want to add the warehouses, don't want to build any colleges, besides widen the trade schools, driver schools, and more, blank, that us teams soon to be developed. Adults need, ain't no opportunities in the city for real. So much talent in the city, in different aspects, but nothing for everything out of the city, with jobs, with schools, starting careers, we don't got nothing. Now, I'm not giving them justification of what they do. As a citizen and as a community leader, it's up to me to help y'all, help them. I'm not going to put, and I, it's, it's not right, you can't put everything on, on y'all up there. We, we, and me speaking from, being from that side of the street, I, I know exactly what to do. So therefore, I want to implement a plan, a structural plan, and I, myself, have reached out to different organizations and the, uh, business and to small-tight millionaires. It says right here, I got a- It says right here, I got a letter of support from nonprofit agents hashtag two. It says it is great, it is with great pleasure that I write this letter of support for your grant proposal, developing youth forum program. Up until now, on treatment of young adults has been focused primarily on behavior, interventions and clinical status. Yet teens with teens were frequently served in childhood in research and education studies which has completely failed them. Your project will address the pressing need for intervention research and apply for applied sentence for your environment. It goes on to say that I need a thousand page business plan and also go through the proper channels, but this is why, this is why I tell you this work. They want an opportunity. They want to build, they want, they want to build their own business. They're tired of, they're tired of killing each other. This comes from them to me. They are sick of it. They're tired of burying them. So they ask me, what can I do for them? I'm going to implement this structure just like I wrote down and this is why, and this is why it will work. It's going to reduce vulnerability and dependency amongst the youth by sixty percent in rural and urban communities. That's the, that's right pioneer. It's going to mobilize and sensitize over one thousand youth in Chester and around, around Delaware County. It's going to advocate mainstream skills with trains, with training forum trains in areas as upper cultural entrepreneurship and talent development. It will reduce the problem of unemployment in Chester City by sixty percent amongst the youth and adults and it will provide forty percent to the economic issues. And the economic issue is we need more cameras up and we need, and we need more, more police on the beat like the hot zone. Twenty-first Street is at death track. They fear for their life and I, and they fear for their life and if, if this plan works, we can put back into our body. We can have more money to our officers to be compensated, to do the control because we lack resources. As an entrepreneur myself, I can provide that tech or our businesses, they want to get taxed anyway, it goes back to the city. It's up to us to build, to build these other people up and we need more, we need more security, we need more armed forces, we need more structure, but most importantly, we need to get them an opportunity. And I know you've got programs like this and I know you've been with quitting, with putting teams together. Utilize me because this is what I'm here for. Y'all all say y'all looking for the next person to step up and rise up. Y'all don't want to have to look for the future because the future has found y'all and I stand by that and I want to implement this and even if you are just considering how this is not going to be realistically, it's not going to happen overnight, but when I put that in y'all hands, can y'all please consider that for me here? And I'm, I'm, I don't want nothing on your turn. I just want these, these children, these teens have so much potential. They want out, but they don't know how to go out. It starts in the home. That is number one, dust run home, but if they don't know nothing, they're going continually, continues, continues to go back to the gun. And, and, and that one body in Chester kills it all because nobody wants to invest in a city that has the epidemic of murder. This is what they get.
Can I respond to you on, um, you said a lot and I definitely want to respond to you on this epidemic of murder piece. All of us live here in this community and I, I want to be very, I like being transparent and I like factual information. So I want to make sure I share factual information with you. The violent crime is down, not up. The, the, the number of fatalities in our community is down, way down, not up. The epidemic of violence is nationwide, nationwide. We don't build colleges. Colleges choose to build themselves, folks come and make, make a decision just like PMC made a decision to come here to the city of Chester and start the university. The opportunities, job opportunities are running rampant. We have a number of job opportunities here that you see, you see them spring up all over the place. Matter of fact, we're trying to even hire more Chester residents to be police officers, young people like yourself, but for some strange reason, the young people won't step up to take on that responsibility of to protect and serve. So I just wanted, you know, families, there are already in play, sure, and police officers across the country, across the nation. Communities like ours and others are finding it hard to hire police officers. Folks that want to protect and serve, they call it snitching and it's not snitching. It's taking care of our own community. So I just want to make sure we put all those things out there for you so you can give mouthpiece of peace to those young people. Make sure that, make sure you take back then that factual information and we'd be more than glad to work with you or anyone else who wants to help make our community better.
Okay, well, I already got three, three from neighborhoods that has a common background. It's not the fact that we have, that schools is coming here. It's the fact that to be told, they thought nothing is being implemented because they don't know. That's why I need to be the voice of reason. This is why I need to push the message to them so they can know. Like we do, we are, like, listen.
Tell them this, tell them this. If they put their face in the book and get their face off the book, they'll know exactly what's going on.
That's right. That's why, that's why as a community, we need to, we need to ensure that happens because they not, they don't see nothing that they can, that they tend to be see, they're not interested and that's a fact. So I got, I need to be the voice of reason. I need to be up there. I need to be on teams implementing, this is what I'm here for because I'm here for them.
We want to do it.
So thank, thank, that's, that's, that's major step, that's major step right there. I appreciate it. Thank you.
Before the next person talks to the podium, Mr. Joe, Joe Von Gordon has to leave, but he's the newest member of my team in the Streets Department and I just wanted to publicly welcome him, welcome him to the department, to our family here, um, Chester City Organization. He's been working very hard. He started out with us and he just fit right in and I, I appreciate all that you're doing and look forward to our continued working relationship. Thank you.
He's open on the floor right now.
Yes. He was trying to leave, but I stopped him. Thank you, Mr. Gordon.
Mr. Gordon.
Oh, I'm sorry, Mr. Joe Von Gordon.
Okay. My name is Laura Shelton, one thirty East Eighteenth Street. I just rise to say thank you. A lot of times I rise and I have a complaint or something, but I brought to the table a couple meetings ago that I was frustrated with the Chester Post Office and parking and I had taken my business to Brookhaven because I could park and go and do my business. Well, the mayor informed me that it had changed at Chester Post Office and that I could finally park his space. True to his word, I was delighted. We drove up, parked, went in, did our business, came and then we came out and it was a wonderful experience and I'm back at Chester Post Office. Now, that might be a little thing to you, but I really appreciated that. So thank you, Mr. Mayor and to the, uh, everyone who was involved in that decision.
Thank you, Michelle. Save yourself some gas as well, too.
Always.
I feel about getting pulled over.
Good morning, Mayor, Council and all present.
Good morning.
Thomas White, Community Outreach Board again. This morning I was supposed to stand here with Mr. Will Lachan and when I came and I looked for him, unfortunately I didn't see him, but I did see his wife and she informed me that he's having some medical issues and, uh, you know, Will had become a staple in the city as well as in the city hall and you never know how much you care for a person until someone tells you, you know, that they're not feeling well or this city. Will is, is, uh, not feeling well with a heart or living issue. So if we can keep Will in our thoughts and our well wishes and prayers, you know, that would be greatly appreciated. So today we were going to give everyone some information for the Kiwanis Club, which I am a member. Will Lachan is the vice president and no, excuse me, he's the president and Mr. Darrell Jones here of City Hall is the vice president. The Kiwanis Club of Chester is having their one hundredth anniversary. It will take place Saturday, November the sixteenth. It's from twelve noon to three P M and it will be in Chi Chester. The honorees are Lisa Gaddy, Carolyn Kegler, Reverend Dr. James Lay, our very own Napis Nichols who handles a portion of fiduciary responsibilities for the city and Mr. Seefers Richardson. There will be a posthumous recognition for our very own William Dandridge Junior, the artist, I'm sure everyone knows who Mr. Dandridge is and probably some of us have heard his artwork, Newlin Palmer and Margaret Marlowe Ziff. With that being said, this is Mr. Will Lachan's wife and she'd like to say a few words as well.
Thank you. I'm Ann Hoobin. You are at seventeen oh four orchestral circle Chester. Thank you, Thomas White, for those very kind words. Will says a hundred anniversary is a time not just to look back and see where we've been, but to look forward and see where we're headed. This event, the anniversary celebration of the Kiwanis Club will take place at the Phoenix Ballroom in Upper Chi Chester. A place with the name Phoenix is the perfect place to hold this event. In the ancient world, they believed the phoenix was a bird that rose out of the ashes and started a whole new life and that's what Kiwanis Club of Chester is going to be doing. As you know, Chester is the city of neighborhoods and that's where Kiwanis is going to focus. We want to work with folks within a neighborhood on issues they're dealing with, whether the problem is trash littering, the air or wanting better relations with the police or housing problems, we'll be there to help. We're going to be doing this along with Thomas White here and Lisa Dennis here, two people who are helping to connect city government with folks in the neighborhoods. Will wanted to give you an example of how this can work. He mentions he, housing problems like the ones in a certain apartment complex in Chester, leaks, wall damage, mold, rats, every, et cetera. They would complain and management would do nothing. Nobody's listening to us, said one. So they brought that problem to Thomas White's group, the Chester Civic League. Wasn't long before a team of city inspectors descended on the apartment complex and did a top to bottom inspection, then told management, you have thirty days to get to work on those problems or it's a thousand dollars a day you will be paying in fines. So you, Mr. Mayor and council members, you may find us come knocking at your door with a problem of folks in some neighborhood. So please join us on Saturday, November sixteenth to trap and chew, but mainly to honor some wonderful folks who have made a difference in this town. Thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Lachan. What, what time is it? You ready again?
Twelve to three. Twelve, twelve noon and I have invitations for, we have invitations for everybody.
We'll leave the flies here at the podium. Please feel free to grab. Thank you very much.
Thank you and, um, that, um, it's the will who has been in our prayers and we look forward to sending him back here as soon as possible.
Over here.
Good morning.
Yes. Thank you. I can't wait. One, not going to just be a problem to you, but maybe some help. That's my intention and my name is Amin Adu, three, my name, two forty, five six meter in Chester here. It's quite a bit that we're going to do, have to do and are going to do like the will go and look, look, inshallah, Allah, we say, God love it. And that's what, what my, my big comment is, uh, I wanted to just read and touch on that, inshallah, God love it. But in part of that, I wanted to say something and I lost that thought, but I wanted to say that. Um, make a, make a reference to what we was just saying. Watch as well as pray. You know, there's two, let me just say, sir, counsel and, and the good people here and certainly we do want to go on. We want to be, uh, this is just the beginning. So let us not get bored and think that we, it, 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 it always called this in a sweet vibe and box. So once we get into this, it's going to be so, so sweet. It's, it's going to be good. So all the efforts, yes, this is the point that I wanted to make there because as I listen, I hear many thoughts and many ideas like this, but even in the Bible, it, it makes mention of something like, uh, all roads lead to Jericho. So we want to have a point. We want to have an object of goal. We want to go, uh, and get into the straight and narrow. These expressions tell us that break these ideas in and let us work and that way we cannot go and going to fall by the wayside or wind up in perfection. So this is one of the things we want to do. As man, as is now, as it is now, there are two, uh, plans for ahead, something of the master plan and I'm going, he has a plan. He has a plan, which is actually the master plan, you know, his, the, the, the divine plan. So this is what we want to get into more into, our Lord's plan. It says that God said, it says, we plan and God planned and God is the best of plans. So man has planned and has gotten lost and it said that he got destroyed because he not, did not say, I'm going to do such and such tomorrow or tomorrow, inshallah, Allah. And it's God's plan, God's will. He got away from that. He's got away from that. We want to, this is very sensitive, every, every, very, uh, gentleman. We want to be able to concern man's plan from God's plan and certainly man, his time is so hard to do, do his plan and we want to try hard, uh, to show like he want to do our Lord's plan. Cause it's the only plan that's going to last. It said that they built their house on a shaky sand cliff. There's enough to tumble over into the fire and it do tumble over into the fire. We want to build on God's plan, which is called Taqwa, the lover clear by law. So we want to dis- stand us, we agree to dis- standing, saying, this is, as the gentleman said, the, the young gentleman of the youth, certainly our youth has a motivation in them now to move and to go and to have things, certainly we are here, we are here. It says, step up, let the youth think of age and let age think of youth and let youth turn out reality. So there's, so there's work in the making. So they just, so this is what you're in the making, and let us go on. God's plan. And certainly that, certain, maybe I see some comments in paper that your input, I see very little, maybe I can come and I send to over here, you know, as you were saying. But you say, God had put this in us in harmony to work God's plan. So we want to develop that, so. With that, so, I'm sorry, I guess I know that, I know, I'm mistaken. But, uh, let, let us keep those in mind, in God's plan.
Thank you, thank you. Here in the scene, any further comments? Here in the scene, the, the Council of New York.